Good morning. Great, we call our meeting to order. Take a seat in the child-friendly seats that Erica has brought with us. The meeting is being recorded. The meeting, the recording does not constitute the official record of this meeting. We're in our pledge of allegiance.
I'm going to put off like.
Yes, there we are. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, any provisions to the agenda?
There is not.
Any public comment on non-agenda items?
If I could just maybe quickly interrupt here. I do know, Lauren, that there's a handful of people who would like to make public comment in honor of your last meeting.
Okay.
I'm going to ask if it's okay with the board that this happened just after adjournment because there's a couple other things that will be happening too. But we'll keep the camera on to make it part of the public record of the board if that's okay with everybody else.
It's okay with the board? Yep, good. Okay, then we'll fly through this quickly. Approval of the minutes, I accept the motion on the minutes of the meeting from March 19.
Nineteen.
Nineteen, motion for approval of the minutes from March 19.
Oh, second.
They look good to me. Anybody have any comments, James?
And Seth is on now.
Oh, hey Seth. All in favor of the minutes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as you can honestly. Recognitions and commendations?
I mean, we're just, we're trucking into the last quarter of the last six weeks, 30 days of the school year or so. I mean, everything, everybody getting to this point in the year, you know, in the school community.
Superintendent's report.
So I have one here for the official minutes, but I wanted to just highlight a couple of things. Our enrollment, we're sticking about the same, starting next month trustees, I'll start reporting not on current enrollment, but projected enrollment for 24, 25. I wanted to talk a little bit about the election timeline and then the informational sessions that we're going to be hosting. So our Q and A number one, and Jack, that would be great if this found its way into the newspaper. Our first Q and A is going to be this Wednesday at the WOMPAC at 6:00 PM. Because as you remember, we have a $65,000 levy on the ballot this year. The ballots come out this Friday, they're going to be mailed from the Galton County Elections Office. Our second Q and A is going to be Wednesday, April 24th at 7:00 PM at base. And our third Q and A is going to be Wednesday, May 1st, 6:00 PM in the WOMPAC. And then the ballots are due back to the county on the 7th, that's Election Day. I'm working on a little flyer that I'll hand out and then also get published somewhere. There's elected officials candidate forum, including school trustees. We have four candidates for school trustee. There's going to be five on the ballot, but one of those candidates has rescinded their nomination, so to speak. That kid no longer wants to run. He couldn't be removed from the ballot, but he can't win. And that's Tuesday, April 3rd at the waypoint, starting at 5:00 PM. And then lastly, I want to conclude my report this week with just a quick kind of data rundown of chairperson bows time on the board. Now, keep in mind, this is just data that I selected. So we have 14. That represents the number of years that Lauren has served on the school board. We have 196. That's the number of graduates who you shook hands with at graduation. We have one. That's the number of times in the last 10 years that this board was voted Board of the Year in the state of Montana. We have a million. That's the number in dollars of the staff scholarships for master's degrees, housing allowances, and student loan payback distributed through the Ofor School Fund, which you were instrumental in securing for the district 15 years ago. We have 24. That's bottles of great wine you donated to the staff retreat and IB training in Missoula in 2016.
How they were supposed to.
It wasn't on campus. We have 500. This is an approximation. This is the approximate number of articles you sent me via the New York Times about educational issues. This demonstrating your interest in education. I never could tell you, I don't have a subscription to the New York. We have thousands and thousands and thousands of hours spent visioning and delivering on Mopick High School's creation and subsequent time at school volunteering, from board committees to working the chains at middle school football games, to taking tickets, to printing programs, to strategy sessions, to coaching, to community and statewide fundraising efforts. We have one. The number of times you intervened in a bar fight and keep Jill and Kasia safe. That was a great Montana story. We have 37 million. That's bond and levy dollars passed since your election to the board in 2010 for building maintenance, operations, construction of Ofor Elementary School, athletic facilities, and steam building. We have 8,000 square feet of employee housing built and being utilized on our campus. Between 150 and 420, that's students per year impacted under your trustee leadership of asking the right questions, seeking the right programming, and keeping the dial moving forward on educating students in Big Sky. We have 300. That's the estimated number of high school and middle school basketball games you sat through in the last 10 years. And then we have zero, which is the number of losses as middle school head basketball.
I think the number surprising the most is graduates. I think, I don't think that number would have gotten very close. I'm sure. 196.
196, and that's pretty, that's plus minus one only.
Yeah, we had some small ones.
So that's my report.
Thank you so much, Dustin.
Appreciate it.
Okay, high school principals report.
Thank you. We completed the ACT on March 26th with the 11th grade, so we have that wrapped up and we start exams for the IB next week. I'm sure Tim will elaborate. This Friday, we have our second Big Sky Teachers' Dinner in the high school for the high school students. And that was a great experience from last year and it really kind of piers them up for summer employment opportunities and beyond. As everybody's aware, very successful and heartfelt production of Malia before spring break, it was a joy. And then our poster, we could just return today, so that's good. And then Lauren, I have a few words.
Great.
I'm not as clever as Dustin or as funny, but I hope that you'll understand how sincere I am, so, and I'm trying not to be emotional. It is with gratitude and sadness that I share a few words today. If I had eyedrothers, you'd stay on the board forever. Working with you these past eight years has been an honor and a privilege. You've given so much of your time and energy and resources to the students and the faculty of Big Sky School District. And I'd say because of your efforts, we have the best school in Montana. We're fortunate that we come to a school that is beautiful. It's in a great location. We have a curriculum that brings the world to our students. You're a fierce champion of the IB. And with that, you share and promote the belief that all students deserve a world-class education. I appreciate the trust you've placed in me and the support you give me. Thank you. I hope you and your families will always stay connected to the school, knowing we will do our best to honor your legacy.
Thanks. Okay, Brittany with the elementary.
She's going down first.
My elementary principals' report, we're looking forward to a strong finish now, 33 days of school left, which seems impossible, but it is. Erica and I attended mass training prior to break. They had a training in Belgrade, it was their road show, and we actually got to meet with the developers of the test, which was neat, and had some good dialogue. As they're looking forward to a full-scale launch with the testing throughout the state this fall. Grade one finished outdoor Nordic skiing for the year. Unfortunately, we had a cancel on the kindergartners and the 4K kids because it just got too warm, but they'll have some fun outdoor experiences in lieu of that. And then we do have a team of teachers that are going to train some PY, or attend some PYP training this summer. And then I'm working on ensuring that our returning staff members who haven't had any training yet will get their first PYP training as well, so that's really exciting. And I have some words for you too. Also, we'll try not to get emotional. I'm really good at that. But not only you, but your family has been supportive since my first day in 2008 with Colia as the second grader. And I never imagined that we would be in a place like this. And just with your vision and your words, I remember sitting in meetings with you about your big audacious goals and how we shouldn't be scared to have them. And I think what we have now is a testament to really, when somebody has a vision and has the dedication and time to put that forward, what it can really come into. And I am so proud to work here, but more than that, I'm so excited that I get to raise a family here and have my kids benefit from everything that you and your family has really worked to develop, so thank you.
That's great. Appreciate it. Well, thank you everyone. This is an honor to hear all this from all of you. I appreciate it. Tim? Footprints just get bigger and bigger.
I'll be brief on my reporting. Really, the big note is the IB exams begin next week for our seniors. It's a tremendously exciting time for them. We start on Thursday, April 25th. We'll kick things off that afternoon with our physics exam, and then from there, the exams run right through Friday, May 17th. So it'll be a busy stretch for our seniors and, you know, we're excited to see them arrive at this point. This Wednesday, I'll meet with them to review the exam details and give them just some final logistics for their exams. Everything else has been already communicated to families and teachers, as well as the students as far as scheduling and all that. And then this week, we'll be setting up the exam rooms so that everything's all set to go. I want to publicly wish our IB candidates the best of luck as they begin their exams next week. In fulfilling the rigorous requirements of the IB Diploma Program, these students have demonstrated commitment to scholarship, academic excellence, and personal growth. I commend these students for rising to this challenge in pursuing a strong finish for their senior year LPHS. Thanks for all that have made this opportunity possible, including their parents, their teachers, the school board, and the remainder of the school community. And with that, I want to express my deepest thanks to you, Lauren, for your leadership and dedication during many years of service on the board. The focus and commitment that you've approached your leadership with will be a defining attribute to your time on the board, and we have all benefited from that. The impact of your vision as board chairs can be observed through the district's strong academic programming with the IB, the district's excellent resources and facilities, and the sense of pride that's shared throughout the school community and the school system. In the five years, in the past five years, since implementing the IB program, we graduated approximately 50% of each of those classes has been enrolled and participated in the Diploma Program. And with those who achieving the distinction of the IB Diploma, I'm very close to that as well. And I think as a public school in Montana, one of only four schools in the state with this system, that is a huge accomplishment. 40% of students, 40 to 50% of these students actually achieving the IB Diploma in a public school like ours is incredible. And a lot of that is a testament to your vision with that program. It's going to be hard to imagine the district without your leadership, or the resounding impact of your work as a trustee will support our success in years to come. It's been a sincere pleasure having the opportunity to work with both you and your family. Thank you for all you've done as a champion of our schools.
Thanks, Tim. And I'm sure you'll be relieved too that I will call in during public comment and ask if we're 50%. Activities report.
All right, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Where's the guitar, John? I was betting on a guitar. Wait, this.
Fortunately, I have to apologize, it was my full intention to be there today, but United Airlines kind of got in the way of my travel plans to be there, so I do apologize. The guitar is coming though, it'll be when you least expect it. All right, so pretty brief report for me, you know, we're just roaring with spring sports and stuff, and the track and golf teams are competing in their first events tomorrow. High school track will be in Laurel, middle school will be at Gallatin, and high school golf will be at Cottonwood Hills. And the committee for amending the eighth grade policy is coming together. Tony Copla, Al Malinowski, and Seth Barker so far have all agreed to join the committee. Of course, with Dr. Shipman and Dr. Mitchum advising as needed. And we'll be planning our first meeting in the next week or so in order to get the amended policy into the athletic handbook to be approved at the June meeting. And to keep piling on, Lauren, we, well, first of all, you guys are getting me, I just came off of a wedding, a best man wedding speech, so I'll try not to get emotional here. But it's, Lauren, it's just really incredible to reflect on how you've accomplished, just even in the last 10 years I've known you, let alone everything you had done before that. You've given so many incredible opportunities to countless people, and I mean, students over the years, and the legacy you've created is just an inspiration. So not just as a school board chair, but as a community member, a coach, and a sports fan, I mean, the school district owes so much of its success to you. And Dustin beat me to the 27-0 middle school record, but I would also like to point out that Lauren coached the first-ever girls' basketball team to their first-ever divisional tournament, so, but you can add that on to your list of accolades, and we are certainly going to miss you and your family. Feel free to drop by to any Big Horn sporting event, anytime, no charge.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, Lauren.
All right, gorgeous.
Can you hear me?
Just barely.
Is this better?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's better.
So I will focus on the positive and say, thank you, Lauren. It's a privilege and honor working for you, and I look forward to your counsel going forward. I really appreciate it. And I will, I will push the business manager's report and the budget committee report to next month.
Thanks, gorgeous. What you mean, next month? Okay, great. Discussion, action, calendar. Can I get a motion on the calendar?
I will make a motion to approve calendar number three for the 2024-2025 school year.
I'll second.
So this was tabled from the last meeting. I put everything in the packet, community survey, staff survey results. The raw data is calendar number one, 74 parents, 23 staff in favor of, for 97 votes. Calendar number three, 86 parents, 18 staff in favor of, for 114 votes. Votes for, I'm going to base this exclusively on the raw number of people who voted positively. This recommendation for number three. You know, if you flip-flopped, it was, it was one in three for the faculty, three in one for the parents, so if we go by the raw numbers, it's that one that goes with longer breaks and a little bit longer, you know, five additional days into June, but a full week at Christmas, two full weeks at Christmas, one full week of Thanksgiving, which seemed to kind of be the tipping point.
So the calendar three is which way? It's the full week of Thanksgiving?
Yeah, full week of Thanksgiving, full two weeks at Christmas.
Right, two, okay. Any questions?
I would just add, I'll probably be bringing a revised graduation date to this group because we've, you know, a lot of Class B, C schools, they have graduation on Memorial Day weekend, but they do it on Sunday. And I think that's due to state track, state tennis, state golf, these kind of state participations. And I would hate for a kid to have to make that choice between, because this is the first time we've done it this early. I would hate for a kid to have to make that decision of being at the graduation or at a state competition, so we'll run it by the parents, the 11th grade parents in the next month or so, and come back to the board in May or June with hopefully a change to that Sunday.
Great. Any comments or questions from the board or members of the public? Very close, it's a close one, John. Good. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as you can honestly.
I'll make the motion to approve the MOU as presented.
I'll second.
So from Gallatin, Greater Gallatin United Way, they want to bring back their after-school program here on campus. I think it's a great thing and resource for our families. They've done some polling in the community, looks like they'll have plenty of people. And really, our only responsibility, and this is I liaise with them a little bit around different things, but really, our only responsibility is the facility, and it's always worked well in the past. And if you remember, last meeting, we approved the MOU for their summer program, so they're a great partner for us and for the community.
And Dustin, did they, was this kind of, they disappeared during COVID and we're bringing them back, or was it?
They disappeared just slightly before that. Sierra might be able to talk a little bit about that too, but it was slightly before COVID, and it became a personnel issue, but they seem to have gotten that ironed out if their last summer was any indicator. And then now, they have a new executive director who seems pretty aggressive about getting into the big, about serving families in the Big Sky area. And a lot of the feedback they got makes sense, you know, there's programs at other places in the community, but a parent might have to leave work, come down here, pick up their student, and deliver them to another site for after-school care. We're here, it's just, it's a natural, just you stay after school.
Sounds great. It's great to have more resources here based in schools.
I think so.
Any questions from the board members? Any questions from the committee? Seeing that, a call for all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Pass as you can honestly.
Make motion for the approved consent agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Before we adjourn, I just have something to say because I wanted to go on the record. But first of all, thank you everyone for your kind words. You know, I've often said it's such a unique experience to live in Big Sky where it was a clean slate, and we had to create all these different entities and build it, but it's also, you know, it's also very meaningful. But with regard to the school, you know, I think I followed in the footsteps of greatness. Jill was on the board before me, and her father was on the board before me, so, you know, we were doing work 20 years ago to start laying the groundwork to get where we are today. And, you know, Jill and I poured our heart and soul into the school system for the past 20 years, but I'm really not here to talk about the past. I'm here to talk about the future, and whether our, your kids and future generations will continue to have access to, you know, what's the best educational experience in Montana, and whether they'll continue to get opportunities to attend the best universities in the countries. And, you know, I want to be direct, whether or not this happens will depend on you, whether you're a school board member or you're just an over-engaged parent, as I was, and lived in both capacities. It will depend on how committed you are to a rigorous academic foundation that you're inheriting. The fate of the kids in Big Sky depends on you and your commitment to retain our standing as the best academic school in the state. You know, the issue of how to provide the best academic program and the best opportunities for our kids kept me up at night, Jill could testify, many, many, many hundreds of times. If that does not keep you up at night, with all due respect, then you should not be on this board. History tells us that once a school loses its academic prowess and reputation, it does not come back. You will face many decisions. Please keep in mind that the best decisions are made in context of priorities. What makes a school stand out to the families, the faculty, and the colleges is that academics are the primary focus. Therefore, all decisions should be made through the lens of what will improve the school from that perspective. The community is justified on the ground in the school. We're a top 400 school in the country, we're the best in the state by college acceptance, and we have the highest community scholarship grants by percentage of students receiving and by dollars per student of any school in the state. Let's agree to keep that going. I can tell you from experience that there will be distractions. Bus routes, coaching decisions, and other non-essential issues bring out public attendance to school board meetings, and they need to be dealt with. How many eighth graders play up to varsity will soon be forgotten. These issues need to be addressed, but do not let them distract you from the goal of retaining our position as an elite academic institution. Even more serious issues surrounding post-COVID enrollment decline and housing costs are still effectively addressed by academic rigor as people then make the decision to live in Big Sky because of the education. The benefit of this focus that I'm recommending is people will know what type of education the kids got every time they speak for the rest of their lives. I think that's our focus. So thank you all for that, those comments I'll put into the minutes and.
Yeah, and we can, maybe, actually, let's leave it open so everything goes officially into the minutes. So now would be the time, if anybody has a public comment on a non-agenda item, to address that. And you can just go, whoever, first come, first served.
Yeah, thanks, Sam. My name's Kevin Germain, just a community member, and really, it's an honor to be here. Thanks to Mr. Bowles. Really, you've been a tireless champion for this school, and I know the pain, blood, sweat, and tears of when you're getting the high school approved in Big Sky and then creating what I consider the best, or the best high school in the state of Montana. And so a huge thanks to me as a community member, and really huge thanks to me as a parent, as three kids that have been the beneficiary of your vision. And if I really did boil it down, somebody said vision earlier, it's your untiring and relentless vision that has brought this to reality. It's the high school, it's the IB program, it's basketball. It's, this is the best school in the state. And so a big thanks to you, Lauren, and for everything you've done for us. And a big thanks to the other trustees and the future trustees, you guys have big shoes to fill, and appreciate for what you do for our children. Thank you. So thanks, Lauren, thanks you guys.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Kevin.
Sierra, well, a community member and a parent of two children that either go here currently or have been in this system. I first just want to say, Lauren, personally, thank you so much. Our family would not be in Big Sky had this school system not been here nine years ago when we made that decision to move up here from Gallatin Valley in Bozeman. The school district was a huge part of that. That's why my husband and I moved up here, and now we're so grateful that we've had the opportunity to get to raise our kids in such an incredible community. So thank you. That has changed the trajectory of our family's life. I also want to say, just as a public servant in another way, thank you for serving publicly. It's so much harder than everyone thinks. It's so much easier to be the critic on the sideline than the leaders that are sitting at the table, making the hard decisions, trying to do the best they can. The vision that you guys have cast for this school and the ability to make so much of it actually happen is incredible, and I know that that wouldn't have happened without a leader like you at the helm that can think strategically and can execute on what they do. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for everyone else that served in that capacity too. It's often the unpopular position to sit in, and the seats to sit in when you're sitting. The decisions are hard, and you guys do an excellent job, and I think all of our children here in Big Sky, all those that have graduated and all those are to come, are the ones that get to benefit from it. And then last but not least, I share a very common, I've always respected you so much, about prioritizing education, but also extracurricular school, sports, and activities. I remember first meeting Lauren, and he said, "My priority is education, but we've got to keep these kids active after school." To think about, I know basketball's your love, but to think about the number of activities we've added at this school that our kids are all engaged in, from every breath of the Warren Miller Performing Arts Center in Broadway, to having new sports teams, I mean, we have a baseball and a soccer team. We have, I remember when my kids were in elementary, it was robotics, or it was this, or it was that. That belief of the combination of the two is what is helping our kids be so successful in the world today. So thank you for sharing that vision too, and making that such a big part of your leadership here. Thanks.
I'd like to read a letter from Sam Burr into the record here. Dear members of the board of the Big Sky School District, I'm writing to recognize the service of Warren Bowles and the Big Sky School District over the past many years. Warren's leadership brought myriad positive changes to the school district and tremendous benefits to the community at large through his service. Simply put, Big Sky would not be the community it is today without Warren's, excuse me. Selfless commitment to building the school district into one of Montana's most academically successful and dynamic education systems. While the accomplishments of the district under Warren's leadership are too many to list, it is important to call out the various successful funding initiatives that saw the completion of Long Peak High School, the construction of the Warren Miller Performing Arts Center, expansion and addition of multiple academic and athletic facilities, the international backdoor curriculum offering, and many, many other extraordinary additions to our schools that benefit the greater community. The separate creation of Friends of Big Sky Education has provided extraordinary support and funding for academic. has provided extraordinary support and funding for academic programs, the arts, and life-changing student scholarships. I know personally that much of this support has quietly come through the years from the Dow family's direct financial support. To say that Lauren Dow has changed the face of education for the Big Sky community would be a gross understatement. Warren's efforts have transformed the educational offerings for our community into the state's very best for the benefit of Big Sky's students and families. Warren's leadership will be missed, but the future is bright because of the commitment made over these many years. My personal and corporate commitment to the future success of the Big Sky School District, FOBZI, and WOMPAC is inspired by Warren's extraordinary history of volunteerism. To recognize Warren's service, our companies will create an endowed annual scholarship, scholarship fund for two graduating students who have shown a commitment to excellence and service to the community of Big Sky. The Dow Family Scholarship for Community Service will be endowed at FOBZI to support undergraduate education or technical school for two graduating seniors who exemplify service through volunteerism that enhances living in Big Sky for all of our community members. Warren, thank you for your service to our community. Big Sky is a far better place for your efforts, intellect, and compassion. With gratitude and admiration, Sam Byrne and all your friends and community members across our rural mountain.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks.
I would just like to add for myself as a community member and parent, a second sign of gratitude. And just feel a huge beneficiary for my kids, all of your great work. So thank you.
And thanks, thanks to Sam and Chris Howard. That's a wonderful tribute to, to keep banging it forward. Really appreciate that. It's actually something the school district does extremely well, and now it's going to be even better. So thank you.
Any other public comments? Online? I see we have Doc Shad Colia.
Gosh, he's up.
Am I up?
You're up.
Can you see me?
We can't see you.
We just got your name. You don't have the camera on it, it looks like.
Okay, okay, that's good. That's really, well, Pop, I, I don't want to embarrass you, so I won't say everything that I have. But I wrote it all down in a letter, so you can read that. I, I just wanted to, to share a short little story that I think is really telling about, about my dad's school board time. I was probably, I mean, this is embarrassing, but I might have been like 13 or 14 years old before I even realized that this wasn't his full-time job. And I think, I think that speaks to his level of dedication. He put it above, above all else, above any other job, any meeting. Nothing was more important than a school board meeting or a board member calling him or a teacher calling him or a builder or a coach. It was always the most important thing going on in his life, other than picking us up from school and taking us to basketball practice and making us snacks and breakfast, of course. So I just wanted to, I wanted to call that out. I feel like that speaks volumes. And I, I love you so much and I'm proud of you and I wish I could be there. And thank you all, I could thank you to everyone who spoke on, on behalf of my dad. It was so lovely to hear. I've seen him go through hell working on, on behalf of, of kids and teachers and the community. And it's so nice to see that scene and reciprocated. So much love, guys.
Thanks, Dasha. Love you.
It's Colia.
Colia. Colia's up. You guys hear me? We got you. Ah, there we go. All right. Hey, Pop, I just, yeah, I'm just, I'm so grateful. And it's been so special kind of listening to everyone talk, given that, you know, Sierra said, this is not a job you want to get into if you want to get public praise. I think anyone knows that and you know it better than anyone. So it's just so nice to see, you know, and hear all these kind words. You're such an inspiration, you know, whenever I tell people about you and your accomplishments, the, the one that always stands out the most is, is what you've done for other people and what you've done for the school. You know, there's plenty of very accomplished people in Big Sky and around the state of Montana, around the country. But there just aren't that many who have done what you have done, whether it's coaching basketball or navigating the small-town politics to, to, to bring a larger, a larger goal and a larger idea to fruition. So I'm just so proud and, you know, I, I, I hope, I hope you can relax tonight. I hope you can just enjoy it. I, I wrote you a letter as well, so I've, I've gotten into more articulate detail though. But I can't wait to see you. I'm so proud.
Thanks, Colia. I really appreciate it. I can't wait to read the letter.
Any others?
Oh, cute.
I have someone to have a public comment.
Well, thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it. It means a lot to me. And I've got total confidence in the board that they're just going to keep it going. But they'll need your support because, you know, there'll, there'll be a lot of people coming over with ideas.
We have actually a book of letters, but I want to, I want to pick a couple to read.
Oh, okay.
And so the first one is, Lauren, thank you for your incredible dedic-, I'm not going to read mine. Your incredible dedication and commitment to education in our community. Your vision and leadership have, your vision and leadership have had a profound impact on the lives of countless students and faculty members, shaping their futures and inspiring them to reach their full potential. Your unwavering service as a school board chair is a testament to your passion for providing quality education and ensuring the success of every minor in Big Horn. Your hard work, perseverance, and selfless dedication have not gone unnoticed. And we are truly grateful for all that you have done. Thank you for your tireless efforts in creating a nurturing and challenging environment that fosters growth, curiosity, and excellence. Your legacy will continue to inspire generations of students to dream big and achieve their goals. That's from Suzie Klein. And then this one, I have to give some credit to Erica. She actually recruited all of these comments. First Erica and Jill. Actually, I'll, I'll see if you can guess who wrote this one. Dear Lauren, congratulations on, a lot of people said retirement.
They've been trying to push me that way for a second.
Congratulations on your retirement from the Big Sky School Board. I wanted to take a moment to give my thanks for your dedication to our community over the years. Throughout my life, you have always been advocating for a better future for all of us growing up in this small town. From the creation of the high school to the Warren Miller Performing Arts Center, your time, efforts, and generosity have gone a long way. I can't even imagine a life where I would have to commute to and from Bozeman every day for high school or my life would be without the WOMPAC. Providing students with the opportunity and means to be involved in the arts was something I didn't know we were missing, but they had a significant impact on my life. I must thank you again for encouraging me to continue my education in lighting design in Seattle, Washington. While I opted for a more non-conventional approach, you played a key role in making it possible to continue on this path. The work experience I gained from the WOMPAC prepared me so well for my work in the lighting industry in Seattle. Thanks to the mentorship, equipment, and opportunities you worked to provide along with John Zirkle. You're learning how to use the equipment in designing for productions like the High School Musicals or the James Swoe Ballet were some of my favorite memories from my time at LPHS. Even now, when I come home to visit, I look forward to attending shows and seeing what current students are up to at the WOMPAC. Your efforts have truly shaped the lives of so many and will have a lasting impact on current and past students in the community. Your involvement with the school district directly contributed to my success in my career and daily life, and I'll always be grateful for that. Every day, I get to do a job that I truly enjoy, thanks to the opportunities I had growing up in Big Sky. Thanks for everything you have done for me and the Big Sky community. Sincerely...
Rashid.
Yep.
For those who don't know Rashid, he was, I don't know, WOMPAC must have been like one year, first year in existence. And we have this kid who decides he's going to do lighting and design, and that's still his career. And so what I think, when I have to describe Long Peak High School in an elevator speech or one sentence or less, I often say it's, it's an IB school with a performing arts center attached. And, you know, he's the perfect example. He's spent his whole career on that since he left. Still pretty remarkable. Surprises to me.
I, I think we have a good sampling of constituents in here and some really great pictures.
We should have a picture of what it looked like the first time Jill and I turned up 20 years ago.
I, I think you'll, I think you'll like it. And that's for you, of course. No, we're not. And then as a testament to the new facility, our shop teachers have been working very, very hard to make this for you.
That's awesome.
Everything made on Long Peak High School.
Even the stand. So much, bro. All you've done to make this class here.
Oh, God, thanks, Kevin.
And then every time you spend any money, you're all in the house. So every, everything made on cameras. So congratulations.
Thanks. It's a lot to us that you're, I'm very happy to be passing the baton over, but Jill and I aren't going anywhere. So we'll, we'll still be around. You'll still see us occasionally. Had some of these things, but not coaching. So, but thank you. It means a lot. And thank you, board members, for all the support over all the years. Appreciate it. All right, meeting adjourned.